Well, go ahead. Seven o'clock, I call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, move to take roll call, please.
Mayor Hammond.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Mike Connell, Chad Fuller, Bob Porter.
Here.
Ms. Delight, here. Jacob Bupper. So Chad, Mike, and Jacob for the accent.
In the absence of Chad and Jacob and Mike, that means we do not have a quorum. We cannot conduct business this evening, but we will go through our agenda for informational purposes and will, of course, have our awards for the Perry Pride and Public Comment Communications and things like that. But we will not be able to vote on any decisions tonight. So we'll move into our approval of the agenda. Oh, because we can't vote.
Right.
We can, but it doesn't matter.
We can't vote, so we can't do that, okay. So we'll put a big N-A by that.
Do you want to vote over the Perry Pride Awards?
We can, we would.
What's next?
We can't approve the minutes from before. And so, yes, we will do the Perry Pride Awards. And Shirley is going to do that on Mike's behalf.
And then you'll have to take your picture because I didn't bring my phone.
Oh, okay.
Please. Okay, so somebody from Bear's Diner, wait.
Unless, okay.
You don't have to take my picture for that, that's okay.
Okay.
So Mike chose Bear's 105 Diner out here on the corner at the Road, what's the road strip voice there? Or what's the name of the truck stop? Anyways, it's at the truck stop. So that's who he chose for that. And then Jan Jenkins.
There you go. Smile pretty. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and he actually has a couple runner-ups. Sharon Wood on Willow and also Stephanie Martin on Willow. Or Williams, I'm sorry, Williams.
So that will move us now into public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment this evening?
Mayor, so you want me to wait for my line?
Yeah, we'll wait for you. Yeah, but I think, Janice, are you here for public comment this evening? Are you able to come up to the podium? Tell everybody your name.
My name is Janice Hicks. I live in Perry on Second Street. Can we discuss anything that's on the list here?
We can discuss everything, we just can't vote on it.
Okay. Mike, what I want to discuss is about the SEDP grant. And I've been talking to the Lansing area where they fix their lead pipes and things. They took the entire expense. And he was telling me, and I won't give you his name. He said, "Don't tell them, Mike, who you talked to." But anyway, he said that when they do a grant, they're actually taking a small amount of money from what is going to cost them later on. And they must have a plan ahead of knowing where you're going to get the money if you don't get another grant to pay for what the problems they find.
And I don't mean to interrupt you. Believe me, I don't, I don't mean to be rude.
No, you're fine.
But you're talking about a totally different kind of grant than the SEDP grant. So you're welcome to stay for the meeting. Justin Horbath from the SEDP is here and he'll be talking about that. But what you're talking about is completely different.
You've said that before, but when I talk to the clerk, I'm not, I'm right, or any of the congress.
You're welcome to stay tonight. It's an agenda item and Justin would be happy to explain to you the differences. But the grant you're talking about is a grant, but it's a different kind of grant. It doesn't have the same criteria, not at all.
Okay, I'll wait till he explains it then, but I may want to comment afterwards.
We have another public comment at the end of the meeting.
The main thing is, have you addressed it with the people in an open public meeting so we can ask these fellows that come in here, Brad Jones and this guy, questions?
We have it on our agenda for two meetings now. So I would say yes to your question.
I couldn't ask Mr. Jones any questions.
You could have as the public comment.
I asked him and he took off, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, there was no discussion.
Hopefully you'll get answers to your questions tonight. Did you have anything else you wanted to bring forward tonight, Janice?
No, I'm very much involved in this. And I would like to share with the public what I found out, but that's okay.
We will move on then to communications and see what Shirley has for us.
So should Chad Fuller just email or?
Yeah.
Okay, so I received an email from Chad Fuller, council member, that effective immediately, 9/12, which was last week, on last Thursday, 2024, I will resign as city council member due to family commitments and increasing work commitments. I'd like to thank everyone for the years I have served on council and wish everyone well. So we received that. So he is the council member who is resigning. There's a few things happening. Let's see, we've got, the car show is on Saturday, 10 to 3 up here at City Hall. We have household hazardous waste collection, which is going to be Saturday, September 21st, from 8 to noon. And this is going to be at Chippewa Trail in Owasso. It's just north of BG's grocery store. Sue asked me to give her this list a few weeks, a few meetings ago and she hasn't reported on it yet. So I'm just going to let you know that as of from January to just this last week, I think I updated this. We've had six new bill applications for new houses between Perry Lakes and Country Estates. So that's that. I did hand out a short paragraph from Kevin, DPW supervisor. And the other thing I just wanted to say was that we have ordered picnic tables for the pavilion. We ordered, how many did we order? I don't remember how many, doesn't, 15 tables maybe? Anyways, we ordered picnic tables. I sent the bill to insurance. They're going to cover all picnic tables. So that's all going to be covered from insurance, from tornado. And that's all I have.
Speaking of tornado, all of our trees and branches that have been in a big pile back by the DPW are partially mulched up finally. The company that we had contracted with last fall had a prolonged period of time that their equipment was down. And we had been in touch with them. Kevin had talked to them, I had talked to them. But they showed up Tuesday and mulched all day. And we still have some that needs to be done. So Kevin is talking to them about another trip out and how much that would cost and we'll go from there. I'm sorry?
I think they were here yesterday too.
Oh, were they? Shirley said they were here yesterday.
I'm sorry, they weren't just contracted to do it all?
They were, the initial contract was for two days.
Oh, it's for time period and not an amount?
Yeah.
I thought maybe it was like a bid, where they bid a certain amount to just do it all. So they're two days for so much money.
They had estimated that they'd get through and believe me, they got through a lot of it, but not quite all of it.
There were a couple mountains back there. And that's all that I have to report on. We can move into committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? We can't approve the bills, so we'll skip past there. We don't have any old business, wouldn't matter. Number one under new business is to accept Chad's resignation, which we can't do because we don't have a quorum. But I will just say in regard to that, that open seat will need to have an appointment made. And based on charter requirements, when an empty seat is filled by an appointment, if there is an election prior to the expiration of that term that's being filled, that ends that appointment. So whoever is appointed will fill that seat until December 1st. And then it will need to be another appointment after that. Could be the same person, could be a different person, but it will have to be done again. So if you're interested in doing that, please let me know. And, gosh, Robert Kittles here. Robert, if you'd just stand up so that if anybody here on council doesn't know who you are, Robert has served as our representative to SADA for two years?
Two.
One?
Not even one.
Oh, really? You do such a great job, it just seems like.
No, I think like, I don't know, eight or?
Okay.
Six or eight months, I think.
Yeah, something like that.
All right. Well, you can go ahead and have a seat. We'll have to move this approval. I would like to reappoint him, but of course we can't approve that without a quorum. So because he has been serving, we will not have to square him in again. So you won't have to come back for the next meeting.
Okay.
But thank you for coming tonight.
No problem. I've been on for a while.
The next item, just to mention it, possible approval of Halloween trick-or-treat hours. That's something we do every year, but once again, we have time, so we'll just move it to the next meeting. What are we looking at as far as recommending that those would be?
October 6 to 8.
October, yeah, 6 to 8, on Halloween itself. Yes, okay. I know the businesses downtown are, do you want to talk about that?
No.
The businesses downtown will do their annual Halloween festivities. And I believe that's the Sunday before.
That's the Sunday before, yes.
Yeah, Sunday before, in the afternoon.
That would be like the 27th, would be the Sunday before.
And does it give a time on that?
I was just looking at my own calendar.
Oh, on Sunday.
Those are posted on Facebook, I just don't remember the details.
Posted on Facebook. But there's just all kinds of stuff for families to do that day downtown and the businesses are very involved. So please support that if you can. I'm going to turn this over now to the SEDP representative, Justin Horbath, who's here, so that he can tell us more about this and perhaps answer Janice's questions if you can.
Yeah.
But I apologize that we won't be able to make a decision on this.
It's okay. And I understand, I know my vice president was here last month. I believe he gave a presentation as well. I was out of town, so I'm glad he could fill in. He's actually out of town tonight, so. But we're a team effort, so.
Thank you for tag teaming.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know, Mayor, it's up to you to recognize the audience and all that. So however you want to handle it. So some key things I want to highlight. It is, as you referenced, Mayor, it is not the same grant. This is a program through Michigan Economic Development Corporation. It is for strategic site readiness. Basically, it's the state economic development organization's way of helping communities position themselves for whatever type of commercial or industrial development they want. And I say that very strongly because what we're doing with these dollars is helping communities do the diligence necessary to determine what do you want based on your master plan, based on your community needs. Because there's been some questions out there. Some of these programs in the past have been drawn to things like mega sites. I think we probably heard about that. There was some activity around the state. There was some activity in the Durand area. This has absolutely nothing to do with mega sites. This can be for small sites that the city wants to have. We have been able to get some of these dollars into the Durand area, into the Owasso and Corona area. And when Brent and myself met with Mayor Sue and your DPW director, we said we would love to get some of these dollars into the Perry area to show some love to the community. So the grant money actually does not go directly to the city. It actually comes through us. So we are the fiduciary. We administer these monies. Hundred percent grant, so I do want to make that clear. There's no cash match to the citizens of Perry, nothing out of your general fund. So that's something important to note, too. And really, the idea, what we approached Mayor Sue and your DPW director, Mr. Tyler, with was what are those needs you might have, particularly as it relates to infrastructure development that may limit your ability to grow your commercial and industrial base in the city. And we know, the council knows, I think the public knows, we do have a limited infrastructure here, a limited water system, a limited sewer system. And once again, there are programs and other state agencies that focus on that, like Eagle. But the reality is, this is about economic development. This is about how can we leverage some of these resources to help you with your water and wastewater system to be able to attract commerce. Another thing I want to know, this is a due diligence grant at this point. Now, what that means, it's money for planning. So at this point, it's not money to literally build a new water system or sewer system or extend pipes or drill a new well field or anything like that. We have for the city available $150,000. So this is, that's not going to pay for really any infrastructure. However, what this does, if we proceed with this, we will give you, it will give you information needed to be able to go after some monies out there. Because one thing that you all know, and I'm sure the public does as well, planning and engineering costs a lot of money, a lot of money. This is money, if you're looking at expanding your water and sewer and a well field and a tower and all that, you would normally have to pay for that out of city coffers or your water fund or your sewer fund. This is a grant that allows you to actually save the citizens of Perry $150,000. Now, what will it lead to? Ultimately, what we want to do, even though we're the fiduciary, it will go through a bidding process. But really, what we want is whoever the contractor or contractors selected are to do this, A, you get the information that you want and need, probably more specifically what your DPW director wants and needs because he knows the system of what you need to maintain and grow, water and sewer. And then, two, you get the contractors that you want. So even though we're managing the dollars, we want you as a council, the city, to be happy with whoever gets picked. So the outcome would be essentially $150,000 worth of diligence work, of studies, planning dollars, if you will, focused predominantly, when we, there could be some wiggle room on this, but predominantly on water and wastewater system, you know, how do we maintain it, how do we grow it? What does it have to do with, once again, pipes or towers or well fields, all the things you might need? And basically, give us a turnkey plan, give you a turnkey plan that we can then go out to search for grant dollars, possibly, if we can land a prospect, there are other monies. And once again, I want to be very careful. What I can offer you is this upfront grant. I can't offer anything beyond that. But if we do this diligence, have a plan in place, possibly identify a site, once again, not mega sites, maybe a small site, maybe it's the acreage the city has on Lansing Road, just east of 52. And if we could bring in a prospect and we have that plan in place, that could potentially lead to more money for expansion. So once again, most of the programs the city has dealt with historically have either been local dollars or Eagle dollars, state environmental dollars. This is a totally different thing. This is to encourage commerce and development. So wasn't that quick of an overview, but hopefully that gives you a picture of the intent of this program.
So just to, so I know that I understand the contractor you mentioned, that this money would be used to pay?
Yep.
Are engineers?
Engineers, that's exactly right. So it could be whoever the city works with now for your water and wastewater system. Maybe you want to, you know, have somebody new. We will work with you on that. So it'll be fully your choice, even though, once again, we're the fiduciary, but it will be your choice on who you want to work with and the work that you get. Because people may say, well, what do we get out of this? We are the Economic Development Agency for the county. We serve the citizens of Perry. We serve every municipality in the county. We understand the need to bring more business and jobs and development here. Maybe not big stuff, but we all know we need more of that commerce if we're going to survive. We need more families here. We need more students in the schools. We need more people shopping in the downtown Perry. And particularly with your infrastructure, and you all know that, it's limited, right? We know it's limited for growth because of the restrictions on water and sewer growth. So if this can move us a little bit further to position this community for future growth like we're trying to do in Durand and Owasso and Corona, that's what we're all for. Because we definitely see this area, particularly along the I-69 corridor, as a great location for opportunity. And once again, I want to say it again to be clear because I've heard this from people, that development would need to be in accordance with what the city wants. It would probably, more than likely, be smaller commercial, smaller industrial. That seems to be the story of this area. We've had a lot of smaller industrial businesses located here, not big ones. But it's really ultimately what you want as a community. Nothing's going to be forced upon you, it's all up to you. Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, Justin, does the, if we accept the grant and get the engineering done and get a product, then will the study complete? Is there any obligation on the part of the city to act on that in a specific timeframe? Because I've had some rumblings that, no, once you've got the study done, we're obligated as a city to move forward and take action on the results of that?
No, no, that's a good question. And I understand the concern by the citizens because there are some state programs that do require that. MEDC does not require that at all. So this is really to try to, and really what we hope for, Larry, is that, as I said earlier, that having a plan in place will give us an opportunity to go find more money to help pay for that. You know, once again, it's not a panacea here. It doesn't do all the work, it just gets us in a better place.
And for those who don't know, would you tell them what MEDC stands for?
Yeah, I'll tell them what SEDP stands for, too. So I've been doing this a long time. I'm the president and CEO of the Chi-Wassey Economic Development Partnership. We are a public, private, nonprofit. We're not a government agency. Been, actually been doing it almost 23 years now. I'm on year 23. We are a countywide economic development group. City of Perry has actually been a member of our organization since, I think, the very beginning. And in fact, I know you were because our two charter members, I'm going to test everybody's memory here. Our two charter members from Perry were Steve Daunt, who's actually now the supervisor of Woodhull Township, and Gene Newell from TDS. Anybody remember Gene Newell? Yeah. So we have support from all the cities, townships, villages, county government, as well as a lot of businesses in the community, about 250 members. And we are really charged with three things. The overarching piece, though, we're working on is just simply trying to grow the local economy. We know that, once again, if we want to get more business, more jobs, more commerce, more people shopping, we need more economic opportunities. So what do we do? Business development, workforce development, real estate development. So those are the three buckets that we fall into. Business development, bringing new business into the area. So a good example, very local, actually two local examples. Lifetime Metal Sales down the road in Perry Township. We were integral and working with them to help them get set up here. Renger Steel Erectors that moved into Spartan Fences, rebuilding at Bennett Drive and Lansing Road. We helped them locate here. Business retention and expansion, so that's supporting existing business growth and helping them stay and expand in the area. And then entrepreneurial development. So that's where if somebody's trying to start or grow a small business and they need help with a business plan or financing or marketing, we have resources for that. So that's business. Workforce, as you might imagine, is companies need to hire people. So how do we help businesses retain and attract workers? Training programs, educational partnerships, things like that. Real estate, it's exactly what we're talking about here, site readiness. The other piece, though, that we're doing a lot more in right now, that, and I heard it tonight from Shirley, I think it's a really good number, is housing development. So once again, I come back, the thing I always come back to, why do we want business? Why do we want growth? Look at the schools, right? The schools are our future. We need more kids in our schools to sustain our future as a community. Can't bring more kids if you don't have more families. And you can't bring more families if you don't have a place to put them. So we are very focused on housing development in this county. In fact, we're beginning to conduct the first ever countywide strategic plan for housing development. That's coming up starting in October. We would welcome Perry representatives to participate in that. So we're doing a lot at the county level. And then MEDC is the state economic development group. So one thing, we don't have a lot of resources, money. They do, they're the state government. And what we've been trying to do over the years is build rapport with them from a county level so that when we need something, we can go to them and they deliver us resources. So they have business development, community development. They're the ones that are responsible for the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. We've talked about that here before. So this is just another one of their offerings. And you may say, well, why did they create this program? What's so special about it? Well, what they realized was, as businesses were looking to locate in Michigan, that communities were not prepared, that they might call the City of Perry and say, hey, we want to build a small factory in the City of Perry. Where do we go? Can I get the water I need, the sewer I need, the power and the gas? And we realize, it's like, we don't know. Or no, you can't, we don't have enough capacity. Well, how do you get enough capacity? Well, we don't know. So this is their way of being able to give grant dollars through their local economic development organization to communities to help them plan. Better, to get them in a preparedness state so that when an opportunity comes, they can answer that question. You can say, well, we don't have capacity right now, but we did all this great planning work and we're working on grant money and we can get this problem fixed. And, you know, now it keeps this in the game. So that's the reason this program was created.
Do you mind fielding questions?
Absolutely.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask Justin any questions?
I don't know necessarily how relevant it would be, but you're talking about water services, right? City sewer and so forth. That has an ongoing cost in the future, which is then therefore passed on to taxpayers. So if, I'm all for increasing the city. I'm all for building up the city and growing. But if we're adding infrastructure, that also increases our taxes. So that's my concern as a resident currently.
Well, it doesn't really increase your taxes. It does increase, perhaps, your water. It does increase, perhaps, your water.
The grant itself, no, the grant itself, no, that's the planning. So I'm thinking down the road, use the grant to get the planning done, the planning gets approved, and you decide to put in more sewer system. At that point, that sewer system has to be maintained, and you pay for that maintenance house, city tax.
Truly, you wouldn't do that, and I'm sorry, Justin, I know we've still.
No, please, I, but go ahead.
You don't do that until you have the business or the additional subdivision coming in. You don't create all that ahead of time and then just let it sit, that's.
No, I realize, you're right.
This is a great question you ask, because I hear this a lot from residents. Expansion of infrastructure can mean a few things, right? It could mean a new well, it could be a line extension, which is what a lot of people think, it could mean a new tower, which all have their own benefit. But here's my general comment, because it's a really legitimate concern. And this is a battle most of our local governments are facing, including the City of Perry. But I hear it all over the county right now. Revenues tight, right? Costs go up, inflation's high, right? So you have this constant battle, year to year, as a local government of, you know, do we cut this, or do we have to raise fees, or all this, right? I mean, it's a battle, you know it. Our answer to all that is, you've got to increase the number of users. You've got to increase the number of taxpayers to defray the cost on the existing user, right? And so really, the only solution to be able to solve this, because costs are going to keep going up, and if you don't increase your number of users, either residents or businesses, those same number of residents got to bear that cost. So we are actively looking at those opportunities. If you can bring more users on the system, then they can help foot the bill and take some of that burden off current taxpayers. That's how we approach it. Good question.
Anyone else have a question for Justin? Janice, did you have any questions for Justin?
I already, that was my question, what he said.
It's a good question.
It was a good question.
It's a very good question. It's a, I'll give you an example.
But I would like to say something more, but go ahead.
Well, here's the one example I would.
I got discounted, that's all, I'm trying to deal with that.
So, so this is, this is one, and actually, this is up in the Owassaw Corona area. So they have a lot of excess capacity in their water system. So one of the things that we're looking at, because it's fairly innocuous, it's not a big, you know, public, you know, concern, not a megacity, but we've been getting some approaches for projects that are what you would call data centers. So like, you know, just a basic building that's got, you know, computer servers, and it doesn't have a whole lot of jobs. Pretty good power user, but a good water user. And the Owassaw Corona area actually has sort of the opposite issue with Perry, because they are sitting on a lot of excess water capacity right now, like two or three million gallons a day that's going unused. Having the same issue up there of, we have to make all these improvements to the system, we don't want to put that burden on our current taxpayers, what do we do? Well, we're working, if we can attract somebody like a data center on the system that doesn't really use services, but they can start paying a really big water bill, that helps that community service that system without putting more burden on that taxpayer. So that's an example, I think, of how business can help the local residents like that, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, but like they did in Gia, the downtown plant in Lansing, they got their own water department, own electric company, and so they were contributing to the inner city of Lansing for use of their, of nobody's, they got their own system. What happens too, I've seen, companies come into a community, and they, and the community wants them, but then they give them a discount on their taxes they have to pay, just like the apartment complex I live in now. He pays no taxes, he pays the City of Perry. And so that puts a burden on the rest of the community, had their taxes and so on increased. But a lot of companies will say, oh, we'll come to your community, but, you know, give us free water or free electric. We'll be glad to come to your city and build a factory or something. And so how do you defend that? I mean, how do you defend the cities on those issues when you've got, you're searching for companies to come in, but you're not really, you know, you're free floating, trying to find one, but do you try to tell them that, hey, this is a stipulation, you're going to have to pay utilities when you get in there? We're not going to give you free utilities. Then they'll go seek some other county they can go to to start their business.
So.
So that doesn't reassure the citizens of this community, as far as I'm concerned.
That's a very good question, if I may address. And I think this is good knowledge for the council and the public. So the one tool, there's a couple of tools, but really the tools that are available to a public body like the city council to support commerce like that would be some type of tax abatement. As far as I know, from a utility standpoint, water, sewer, there's really nothing you can do, and then power and gas is obviously consumers' energy. So that's out of our control. Now, the tax abatement piece that you're referring to, there's a couple of different ones that are out there. Now, if it's an industrial one, and I don't think we've done an industrial one here before, because the city does not really have an industrial part. The program that's normally used, it's been used actually in Perry Township, is a PA-198. That is a 50% abatement on new investment for up to 12 years. It is a case-by-case basis, they're not automatically granted it, they, they would, if any prospect had a desire to pursue that, they would have to come in front of the city council and the public, there'd have to be a public hearing, and the council would actually have to determine whether or not they're worthy of it. What you're referring to with your apartment deal is probably something called a pilot, if I'm not mistaken, am I right?
They were given a subsidy.
Yeah, so there's been some change in, that's been there for a while, there's been some change in the law, but what that is, once again, for the public, is rather than paying normally, a normal property tax mileage, they basically pay, it's called payment in lieu of taxes, that's why it's called pilot. It's one check to the city, with the idea being that, and I don't know the details of this pilot, but that would pay to cover services that the city renders on the property. Now, it's a, it's a really good question, because it's always that genuine like, are we giving more than we're giving, right? That's really the question out there. Now, I will tell you, and this is something to plant the seeds for future development, more and more communities are turning, and this actually came up in Duran a little bit with some work over there, more and more communities are turning to what you would call legally binding community benefit agreements. Now, what does that mean? So that can actually mean that, you know, in order to gain support, you know, maybe it's selling property, maybe it's utilities, maybe it's a tax abatement, whatever, a company can willingly enter into some type of an agreement with a local government to provide some type of community benefit. Now, what could that be? Could be for a park, could be to help out the fire department, could be to do, you know, something. Because, to your point again, what you really want, what the council wants, what the public wants, is you want a good neighbor, right? You want a company that will come in and fast create jobs, but they're also going to be a good neighbor, that ultimately is going to be a win for the taxpayer. So, you know, once again, it's a case-by-case basis, it's certainly down the road, we're not there yet, we're like five steps before that, but I'm planting the seeds now, because these are things you want to think about if a couple of years from now we come forward and bring you a prospect for one of these properties, and they ask those questions, be thinking about that, so.
Yes, and Janice, I just want to clarify for everyone listening that the city would never give free water or free sewer to anyone.
I don't think anything is possible.
We're legally bound by the loans that we have with USDA and whoever else. We have loans for our lagoon and our well systems and so on. Those mortgages, if you will, have language in them that says, we must charge everyone that uses it. So that, that would never, and honestly, I've never heard that happening. I'm sorry, why?
I understood that you pay for their waste management, the dumpster dumped.
No, we don't.
No, we do not.
We do not, they pay their own dumpster.
We do not.
You, okay?
They pay their own water bill, their own sewer bill, and they have their own trash dump.
Okay.
He just said what?
Because that's not what we knew.
Oh, you're talking about pilot?
Pilot is only for your property taxes, it's outside.
But not, okay.
It does not affect or impact water, sewer, garbage, they have their own garbage, they don't go to the city, because they can opt out because of the corporation. So they don't go to the city for that. And also, it's a bigger can, they eat a dumpster instead of a, you know, a roll.
But I was told by Joanne, the former clerk, or the treasurer, that seven years ago, that we agreed to give them a, it's a long story, to try to reiterate all this stuff, but the point of it is, she said, that way, they pay us a check every April 15th, and we divvy it out, and keep some, I guess, but I have to look at the FOIA that I got, it's upstairs, I can't, I can pick it up. But I'm going to lose my train of thought here, I don't want to be on camera. But anyways, that's what she told me, that we give them, they have to maintain their apartment, maintenance stuff that goes on, and that is ludicrous over there right now. So they slipshot on a lot of stuff, you know, over here, the management does. We have a little bit better manager now, but there's a lot of issues going on there with the use of one washer and two dryers for 24 people, and that's against the law, they have to have eight. Joanne said that for, have to have one washer and dryer per eight people. They're using 70s washers and looking for parts when they break down, and all this and that, and a leak in the roof that went on for two, two years, and could have black mold in it, and we couldn't get the county to come in here and look at it and test it, couldn't get the city to do it. Everybody said, no, that's the county, I call county, you know, they ain't going to come in. That kind of stuff goes on over here, and the weeds are growing up all over the place, the trees, and by the building, that's going to correct, cause problems with the pipes. But the point she's made is, she said, yeah, they're giving us this money, and then we divvy it out to the, for the 10%, of the 300,000, well, of the, they give 10% to the city, and they make 300,000, the last time I checked, on two properties per year. So that would be $30,000. And then she, the treasurer, she's not here tonight, gives 40% to the State of Michigan General Fund. And then we can't, none of us here, if you go down to H&R Block and try to claim a property tax refund, nope, that, those two complexes, you can't do it. And we're on electric heat in our senior place. The family place that has four stairs, so USDA, rural housing, always pays the furnace bill, the gas bill, but we're on electric. They switched us from forced, or water-based board heat to electric. My bill, just for an AC, the last three months, every month's been about 65. And in the winter, it runs from 100 up to 196 for some of these people that want it hot in their apartment. We have our own thermostat. And we got that kind of settled with the management. They weren't turning on the heat for the building, they wanted our apartment heat to heat the building. So then, the one thing, but this kind, I've shared it with them, but I'm telling you, this kind of giveaway programs, it's just a, that's a $150,000, we'll pay for an engineer, and one thing I wanted to ask you, are they going to have all these plans, you know what I mean? They're going to write up like a, not architect, but I don't know who does it, with all these big sheets of paper, of plans, or where maybe another well should be, or a pipe should be, or a designated area for a subdivision, and stuff like that. Yeah, this, this area could prosper, but the other thing that I'm concerned about is you're going to cause somebody to say, oh, you know what? I think we could do a solar farm out here on this five acres. That's been for sale, let's, let's get the company to buy that and do a solar farm, and let's get some windmills up here, let's make, let's have them pay electricity with windmills. So are you, are you prospecting for those kinds of things?
No, and I come back to the point, I mean, this is going to be what the city wants, what the city council wants. This is not to direct any particular kind of business to locate on this property at all. This is not trying to locate a certain kind of industry, or, or anything like that, you know.
You're not setting it up for a big time thing?
No, no, that, well, that, and that's, and I'm, and I'm actually glad to have these questions, because I'm sure you're not the only citizen that has these questions.
I know.
But this is, this is the way it's supposed to work, right? Is you come to your public body, and I'm here to answer, so I actually appreciate. And by the way, always, and this is for the viewers as well, I'm happy to talk to anybody, or Brent on my team, happy to talk to anybody. Full transparency, if you have any other questions. I mean, you can tell that I, we're not, we're not trying to hide anything here, we're just trying to bring opportunity, you know, to the city.
And it's good, and I'm all for that, I don't want you to think I'm not. But the point of it is, I see, you know, businesses have come in and they, they're on a 25-year contract with one, there's no competition is the problem. A contract with Wow Internet Service, that was just sold, so they should be able to break the contract. We have TDS phone, we have no landlines here. You know, ask, ask the city what they've had to do for their internet service and stuff.
Yeah, we have landlines.
There are landlines here, Janice.
You can have a landline.
With whom?
TDS.
That's not, it's a computer voice phone.
But we do have landlines here.
We do mine, but we can't get it.
I'm sorry.
My dad has TDS, and he lives right across the street from you. He has TDS.
He has a landline.
Eighty-four dollars a month to go on in the city, that's what it is for us seniors.
I, I think we're kind of off topic, Janice, and so.
It's always connected with what the people are.
Unless you have other questions directly related to what Justin's been talking about.
It's all related, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't appreciate being discounted on it. We are the people. You know, I don't pay any taxes there, no, but I worked these six years of my life.
At the end of the meeting, and you're welcome to bring those comments forward.
And because I'm in a poor county, nothing is paid. We get, we, we have to pay, we have less benefits because of this poor county being a farmland, which is fine, there's less people here, and that's good, that bring more people in. But my, I would have better benefits if I lived in Lansing or Traverse City, or because it's a larger city with more businesses contributing.
And your welfare brings these concerns.
Well, that's what he's trying to help us do too.
When you're about crippled up with arthritis and osteoarthritis and thyroid cancer, and there's a cancer cluster in this town too.
Janice, that's what he's trying to help us do, though, is like what you were saying, is to kind of make this a community that we all share that expense, instead of having just one person. So that's what he's going to be looking into, helping us grow, but grow the way we want to grow.
Well, I want to see what you did with us over here, though, that's the point. If you can see that as an example of something that you shouldn't do for the next persons, people that come in here.
Well, and I think that's what they'll be doing, is looking at the past, the present, and what we want to do for the future.
And they didn't do it, you guys weren't even in the office.
Right.
Does anyone else have questions for Justin, the SEDP representative?
How would someone get ahold of you? Where are you?
Uh, yeah, I'll give you my number, 989-725-9241, that's my office line. My email is J H O R V A T H, jorvath@sedpweb.org.
Thank you.
And the relevant questions from the camera operator, I love it.
Oh, hey, I'm talking to the audience.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
No, but thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
We'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
True border.
So we need to move past other approval items, and number seven under our new business is a discussion regarding IT service. Now, we could go ahead and discuss this tonight, or we could wait until we have full council who's going to need the information too, but what's your pleasure?
I'd rather wait too, because wasn't Officer Box also talking about this?
Yes.
I'd kind of like to have him, at least, if possible, have him here too.
So we'll move that to the next meeting as well.
And I guess the other question that I can ask pilot, you can ask, or maybe you know the answer, has anyone else responded to the RFP other than the one that we've got?
No, and I meant to call Justin Bush today, so I will call him in the morning, because I didn't hear back from, from him, so, yeah, we'll get that settled, I guess.
I like that, because we're talking about it, I like to have a comparison somehow.
Yes, I'm going to write my.
I know you said it was difficult to get many after we talked.
Well, I do have one from June, I think it was, so I can most certainly give you guys copies of that, I mean, we have it, we just.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just because I'm curious, what is it you're discussing about the IT, about IT? You're talking about the city's IT, you're talking about the residents?
The city's, the need of an IT system, email, that kind of stuff.
Security. Yeah, we need a IT service.
I see.
That is.
Serving us, the way we need to be.
Yes, that is better than the one we have now.
But you're not talking about the service in the town, general zone?
No, just for us, yes.
I just wanted to clarify, be clear.
Yeah. No. Okay, so we don't really have anything else on here that we can address, so let's go to any other business. There, there is a handout, and I'll just reference it, because we can't make a decision on it tonight. There was an email from Kevin Tyler regarding Veterans Day, so if you'll just make sure you read that before our next meeting, we'll discuss it and make a decision on it next time.
Did I give it to you guys?
I don't remember seeing anything about Veterans.
It's in my package, which is in the drawer, I can get the ability.
That's right, yeah. And if you don't have it, we'll.
I'll make sure you get it.
Make sure you get one.
Or maybe it's not in there.
Maybe, maybe we'll just email it out to everybody, Shirley.
I apologize, yeah, I must not have included it. I thought that I did, but I ended up with a blank mark. Okay.
The only thing, the whistle was the thing about the backup.
Yeah, okay.
And so then, then I'll. And so that then also takes us to our second public comment time. Janice, did you have other items you wanted to bring to council during this public comment?
I have a, I, no, I, it doesn't. We need to pray for our election and our governor or in our president. But there was no invocation by an assembly of God preacher tonight? He didn't show up or something?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I was going to mention that before we pray, but whatever.
Anyone else have any public comment?
I have one public comment.
Okay, Chris.
My wife's going to hate me. I nominate my wife for the city council seat.
It's not a nomination. She actually...
You're putting that idea out there.
I'll give you her government, you can call her.
What have you done?
Yeah.
Who's your wife?
I'm not eligible, I'm not doing it.
Well, you did a good job up there.
Bob, did you want to bring up the topic, or do you want to wait till next time?
Um, well, I can bring it up.
Okay, Bob did something she wanted. He wanted to...
No, that's nothing. My wife went to Sam Singh's coffee and meeting, or whatever that gets called.
Like a meet and greet kind of thing?
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, up in Owasso, because she had a, something she wanted to talk to him about, bring up. And Perry Township, Mr. Folks was our supervisor, the supervisor for Perry Township. It was Jason Kellin, everyone there, it was like a roundabout table. How he got money from Alyssa Slot and the federal government to expand the township's water system. So the township doesn't have a water system, it's city of Perry's water system. And I understand they don't have the money yet, but we don't have the capacity to hook up to anything they may do. So that's one reason we want this grant, to try to see what would need to do that. So he is telling some fibs about the details and the little things that have to go and coincide with any pipes or system that they run through the industrial system that they, is in the township, to hook up to the city system.
We did discuss this type of an issue with him a few months back. And council asked for a committee of people, so Mike and Chad and I and Kevin Tyler from SVP, or, from D W, went and met with the supervisor, the treasurer, and the clerk for the township. And Justin Horvath went with us, and Brett Jones went with us to make sure they understood, they being the township, understood that we are not able to hook them up. We're not at a point that we can do that, and we're not going to do that until more engineering's been done, more investigation has taken place. And we thought we made that perfectly clear, but evidently not.
No, that's... I wasn't at the meeting, but my wife was pretty clear what she heard and told me. So it's, it's not true if you were there or had heard that. I believe they want to run the pipes through, is that Bennett Road?
Yeah, Bennett Road.
But unfortunately, the city would not be able to hook up to their pipes. We don't have the system capacity to service all those people and the city if there was some catastrophic event. We could probably do it if it was just every day, nothing ever went wrong. But if there's a catastrophic event, a fire, derailment or something like that, it would, it would not work. So we couldn't hook up to it because of the source that we have. We don't have enough source of water to provide that loop. And I think the loop would be great, we just don't have the system to do it.
And that's why we need the research and the money to do that research.
Now, the other parts that were studied previously said we need another well, and we need another tower to be able to support that kind of piping. Because it's really a three-legged stool, if you will, that have all got to work together to afford supporting anything like that.
With the point of it, have you addressed how much that will cost?
More than a million and a half dollars.
All right, so, so are there grants available at this time for something like that?
And that's what Justin will be looking into.
Yeah, but...
There is, no. The short answer is no. There is not. So we have to have the study to say, we need, I'm just going to throw a number up, because I don't know what the number is, $10 million to do this.
Right.
Then you can go to that and say, okay, the township has X, the city has Y. We need to get grants for Z, okay, to complete the system. And, and it's a lot. Water towers are a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
So just the water tower's a lot of money. Then you have to have the well, and will one well be sufficient of capacity?
Pump the water, yeah.
So, and then you have to, you know, then you take the chance also. You have an aquifer that's under the ground. That aquifer, you know, they're stable, but could that be a problem down the road? There's lots of moving parts, and lots of things are connected, a lot, a lot of things. You have to have your, all your ducts in a row and a plan, so you know you can, you're going to pump 10 million gallons a day, or whatever that number is, to support that.
What about if you have the engineers do, say, $50,000 worth of plants on the water system alone? And then they try to find the grant for you to pay for it?
The way that grant's set up is not, so, I don't know if you've priced out engineering lately, but engineering $150,000 hopefully will get everything we need to have done, information.
Right.
It may be shorter. Engineering is very, very, it's, it's, it's very expensive, but it's also in demand, because we're doing so many roads and construction stuff. It's going to be hard for us to find an engineer that will get to it in a timely manner.
Right.
Infrastructure is something that, whether you're talking your local municipalities or the federal government, infrastructure is something that is talked about constantly as we need to improve our infrastructure, we need to build more infrastructure. But the, the problem being is that it is so incredibly expensive. It's just why we have bridges falling down. Because if you don't, you don't have the money to maintain this. It's stuff that's extremely expensive, especially if you're talking about things like water. We don't want to flood out the town. Electricity, you don't want to start fires. You got to make sure stuff's done right, and that's why it is so incredibly expensive.
Right.
But they don't really want to use coal or gas or natural gas anymore. They want to use solar farms and windmills.
Well, there's nothing wrong with that. It's all, it's just like, so you, you can, it's all going to be connected. It's just like the blacksmiths when the cars came out. I bet you they were mad because they weren't selling enough horseshoes. So it's, everything's moving towards that. But we haven't had major, major invest, investment in the country, the whole country, since Eisenhower was in office, okay? He built the highway systems, and then we said, oh, it's good. Well, how many years ago was that?
Yeah.
We, we were very poor at thinking forward and planning forward. And then everything goes up. Every year, everything goes up. It's just, it happens. Everything goes up, and then all of a sudden you have, something happened, and everything jumps tremendously more, correct? So it is what it is. There's nothing we can do about it. We can't go backwards. We're not going to, no one's going to snap their finger, and we're going to be in 1950. It doesn't work that way. So all we can do, we can, we can complain, and we can say, we don't want solar, we don't want wind. I want to run all my gasoline engines, but pretty soon, there's going to be a problem. So why don't we get everything, look at everything as a solution instead of doing this or that. Throw, the old saying my dad had, throw the baby out with the bathwater. Doesn't work, right?
Any more discussion to be held, council? Do you have any observations or anything else you choose to discuss this evening?
No, I'm good till late.
Then at 8:02, this meeting is adjourned.